I call to order a regular meeting of the President and Board of Trustees in Machesney Park, Illinois for Monday, March 16th, 2015. Please stand for invocation led by Pastor Jared Kemp from North Parton Church of Christ and Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee James Kett.
Our God and Father of all creation, may all wisdom, glory, and honor be your name. We humbly come before you asking that your hand and your guidance would be on these proceedings. It is our prayer, Lord, that you would bring wisdom and honor into this place so that the decisions and conclusions made will fall in line with your will. We thank you for this time that you have given us and ask that it would be used well and wisely. We pray all these things in the name of the Savior and Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk take roll call please.
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Here.
Tammon.
Here.
Kit.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Yo.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
Thank you, Lord, we have a quorum. First, we have here the approval of minutes from March 2nd, 2015, board meeting and March 7th, 2015, budget retreat. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions or changes? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next, we have Treasury Report. Steve Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. This weekly Treasury report will reflect all the funds. Billy has five million, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and three dollars and ninety-six cents. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. I entertain a motion to accept the Treasury report.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasury report has been accepted. Next, we have Communications. Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, first of all, I'd just like to say how blessed we are in Machesney Park to have a great student liaison that we have in Justin Porter. And we'd like to congratulate him for having been accepted at Southern Illinois University with a full ride scholarship. And this evening, we're also pleased to have with us Michael Mastriani, President of Rock Valley College, who will speak to the board.
Thank you very much. And a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for asking me to come. The talking points tonight have to do with Rock Valley College's Aviation Maintenance Mechanic Program and our relationship with AAR Corporation, so I thought I would address that. From 2010 to 2012, discussions took place at Greater Rockford Airport on expanding the Aviation Maintenance Mechanic Program at the airport. At that time, the college administration declined to do so due to the additional cost to do so and the fact that we subsidize each student that we teach. It used to be one-third, 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 one-third the cost of tuition, one-third is the cost based on EAV and one-third based on the state, but now tuition is a little more than that, at over forty percent. So, in 2013, Spartan, an honest state for-profit school, entered into discussions and explored the feasibility of providing those educational services at the airport. The hope was to lure an MRO or Maintenance Repair Overhauler to the community. And the reason for that is you need an MRO component to have onsite if an airport is going to increase cargo traffic, which is the plan at the airport. So, we thought about maybe re-entering discussions at that time. Our fees, including tooling, is about one-fifth the cost of that school and other for-profit schools. With two more classes than this school was offering, a person could get both the FAA licensure and an associate's degree. And the significant part of that is that qualifies them for Pell federal funding. So, if a student is from an underserved population and wants to go for two more classes, they can get an associate's degree as well as everything they need for their FAA licensure and get grant funding. So, at that time, knowing this, the new RVC board and myself decided to invest money into our program to be an alternative to Spartan. The result is a 40,000 square foot facility that we're building right now at the airport with the capacity to teach six classes, two in the morning, two in the afternoon, and two in the evening versus one class that we have now. It expands our hangar for larger equipment. Right now, the hangar is pretty small as well. And we can accommodate larger aircraft by having a little bit more space. Because of the RVC commitment and because of our faculty and their exemplary curriculum, AAR decided to come to this region. The facility will be built 60 feet away from our facility, right across the road. And the beauty of that is that they can accommodate our students with practical experience in larger aircraft that we can't fit in our hangar. So, we can train somebody at our facility and then they can move right next door to learn it right onsite. So, that's going to be very exciting for our students. AAR is an excellent partner. They are helping us with their curriculum augmentation. They looked at our curriculum and made some suggestions to make students that get out of there a little bit more employable. They're looking at helping us secure needed equipment and upgrades of equipment. Sometimes you can only rework the equipment so long before you need some other types of equipment to work on. And they're helping us in recruitment. If you remember, we had a recruitment event at the airport which saw about 400 people attend to express interest in getting more information on what this facility is going to help us provide. They also talked about discussion down the road about tuition refund and scholarship opportunities. They were willing to try to help along with the airport, the county, and our foundation when this discussion takes place. We already started doing some discussion on this. They were going to help when Spartan was coming. We're hoping that we can get the same level of commitment because we really are reaching out to people and underserved populations in the entire community. Right now, we have programs that we offer such as CNC, computerized miracle control machine operator training. It's an eight-week program. We try to get as many people as we can. It's subsidized by some grant monies. And the result is that everybody, including people from this region, that has gone through the training, has been able to secure a job. So, we're hoping for the same type of things occurring here as well. Now, what they need us to do is provide 120 students. We were graduating about 30, so this is quite the expansion, but with the new facility and more opportunities, we already have expressed interest from 80 students for fall and 40 students in the spring. Now, this is their preference because you can't onboard all 120 at once anyway. They have to have that kind of... Our students that start in the fall, those 80, will be ready two years from now when they open. And that's what they need. They have to have 500 jobs initially that are experienced people before they can onboard students and do the training and mentorship that's needed. Ours is a two-year program. All of our grads will be guaranteed an interview. And starting pay is around $25,000 to $30,000 a year. The average worker there eventually makes $50,000, but it takes a little while to work up to that. Since they're all granted an interview, what happens if positions aren't initially open at this facility? They have guaranteed us that they will transfer people to one of their other facilities so that they can start employment right away and then bring them back when they're ready to come back to our region. There are other manufacturers and businesses that love to have our aviation mechanics as well. Woodward and other companies are sorely in need of employees right now as well, and they will hire our people. Also, our students... There's at least one student at every facility at that airport. So, we have just a great program with a good result. So, that's a little bit about the history and the relationship with AAR and what our plans are. Again, we're gearing up to start in August. We're hoping that the weather holds out. We really need that. We're about a month behind right now. In order for us to start, we really need good weather, so we're hoping that that holds out so that we can catch up. And the skin is going on, the steel's up, but roof's on, but we have to pour a foundation and begin all the infrastructure, so we think that we'll be ready by that time. So, can I answer any questions for Your Honor or anybody else in the room?
You indicated that you already have 120 students qualified to... I mean, what that we'll be starting next fall?
Well, these are interest.
Okay.
We have a couple of things we have to go through yet. And what happens often is that about 15%, 20% of the students will drop out from year one to year two. Sometimes they don't realize the difficulty sometimes in not only that, but the math requirements and some of the requirements that are necessary. So, a lot of times, we'll lose some. So, we always have a waiting list. We decided to start what we call a bridge program so that interested students don't just drop off and say, "I don't want to go on the waiting list." So, we put them in a bridge program where they can get some classes in mechanics and so forth now to keep their interest so that we can also have them in case we need them in August. So, we're thinking that we will probably be fine in terms of our enrollment, but you never know. So, more students the better. And, you know, we are in a position right now where I'm looking for other types of training programs where a student can get a short-term certificate leading to a job. So, also, if a student says, "I'm not sure that this is my cup of tea," we can also get them into one of our other programs. There are some that are eight-week and 16-week programs that can get them a pretty decent living as well. So, I turn no one away. If anybody has an interest, we're looking for that, and we're also looking for scholarship potential. And we're praying that our state and federal funding doesn't go away. We had some earmarks that are gone, but we're looking at ways of trying to subsidize as much as we can to make sure that we're meeting the needs of underserved populations as well. That's important to me.
President, Mike, can you tell us how many people from Machesney Park are currently involved in the aviation programs? Do you know the numbers?
Boy, I'd have to get that for them, Mike. I'm sorry, I don't have that with me tonight. But they're coming from the region, all over the regions. I'm sure there are some students from here. Sometimes this appeals also to a rural student. Sometimes if you've been slinging a wrench around a little bit at home, it's a little easier for you to see yourself in a position like this, but that doesn't preclude that there would be students from Harlem and other places that would be also involved in our program. That is something I can get through you if the group is interested in all of that. Yeah? Anything else? I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much. And if there are other questions or if you know of some students, feel free to give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lori. Next, we have warrants. Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I present warrants in the amount of $1,132,328.30. They were reviewed and are recommended approval... They were reviewed and approved and are recommended approval from the Administration of Finance Committee, and they move for their passage.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions? I see none. Will clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Lori. The warrants have been approved. Next, we have administrative reports. Take... Let clerk take note that on the consent agenda, line item D, I'm moving that to unfinished The consent agenda, line item D, I'm moving to the unfinished business. At last board meeting, I made a recommendation to appoint Shane Klinger to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Will clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Tammon.
Aye.
Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Shane has been approved for the Planning and Zoning Commission to replace Jamero Hughes. His term expires in September, but he'll be leaving after this month. So, Shane would be sworn in on April 27th and be seated at the same time at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Shane is here this evening. Do you have anything to say?
No, not this time.
Congratulations. Next, we have Attorney Green.
I have a report to that charter. Thank you.
Next, we have Village Administrator.
Thank you, Your Honor. Quick note that the official newsletter of the village, Spring Edition, has gone to press. Advanced copies have been placed at the places of the trustees for your review, and the residents should look for this in their mailboxes around the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next, we have Community Development Coordinator, Lucia Matlock.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, I attended an International Economic Development Council training course called Economic Development, Marketing, and Attraction. The course emphasized the fundamentals of developing and implementing high-impact marketing attraction things, and I learned it's most important to become a digital investor using GIS mapping technologies, website design, and social media because current trends show that site selectors want self-service information with no barriers to data regarding a central site. I'm very excited about using the information that I learned over the week, and I'm also happy to say that we are already implementing some of these things on our website and making those things available to site selectors.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lucia. Next, we have Harlem High School student, last on, Justin Porter.
Thank you, Your Honor. On Tuesday, the 17th, girls JV and varsity soccer play United Township High School at Harlem. On Wednesday, the 18th, there's a varsity boys and girls track and field. It is a Nick Ten Indoor Invitational. On Thursday, the 19th, there's a varsity boys and girls track and field. This is the Nick Ten Indoor Championships. On Thursday, the 19th, girls JV and varsity soccer play South Peru High School at Harlem. On Saturday, the 21st, there's a Byron Indoor Classic at 8:30 a.m. at Byron High School. On Saturday, the 21st, also, there's a boys JV and varsity baseball. They play a doubleheader at Rochelle High School. And on the same day, boys freshman baseball play Rochelle at Harlem. On Wednesday, the 25th, varsity girls soccer play DeKalb at Harlem. Also, another noteworthy event is Harlem's Talent Show that is brought on by NHS. Be sure to come out and show your support. It's on Monday, March 30th at 7:00 p.m. That is all. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Next, we have Public Safety Supervisor, Sergeant Doug Bushman.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the period of February 27th through March 12th, the village had 798 calls for service. There were 249 reports taken and 209 arrests. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Sergeant. Next, we have Committee and Trustee Reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Trustee Kit.
I would like to say happy birthday to the late, great Frank Machesney. His birthday would have been March 17th. He was born 1898, and he would have been 117 years old since we moved to aviation.
Is there any... Trustee Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The public improvements the Safety Committee met this evening and will be moving two resolutions forward to tonight's board meeting agenda.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Are there any more reports? I see none. The next item for consideration is the consent agenda. Are there any items that a trustee would like removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? I see none. The consent agenda is accepted as presented, and I will entertain a motion to approve all items under the consent agenda.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A is Ordinance 6-15, an ordinance amending Chapter 9, Article 9.214 of the Liquor Control Code, increasing the number of B licenses from 13 licenses to 14 licenses. This is the second reading. Item B is Ordinance 17-15, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 14-15 budget to modify line items in the Road Fund, the North Second Street Tiff Fund, and two items in the General Fund. Second reading. Item C is Ordinance 18-15, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a $3.5 million debt certificate for the Road Fund at a rate of 1.52% annually for the maturity in April of 2020. Second reading. Item D has been moved. Item E is Ordinance 20-15, an ordinance establishing policies to sufficiently maintain records and demonstrate compliance after issuance of tax-exempt bond obligations. Excuse me. Second reading. Item F is Ordinance 7-15, an ordinance approving a variance to the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 2.5 feet for the property at 8418 North Second Street. First reading. Item G is... I'm sorry. Yes. Item G is Ordinance 8-15, an ordinance granting a special use permit to operate an open auto sales lot at 10208 Smythe Avenue. First reading. Item H is Ordinance 9-15, an ordinance approving a variance to the side yard setback from 6 feet to 5 feet 1 inch at 12104 Ventura Boulevard. First reading. Item I is Ordinance 10-15, an ordinance adopting the official zoning map for 2015. First reading. Item J is Ordinance 12-15, an ordinance amending the village zoning code to provide that the height of commercial freestanding signs is measured from the adjacent grade or curb height, whichever is higher. First reading. Item K is Resolution 7R15, a resolution authorizing issuance of a Class B liquor license to Meyer Stores located at 1770 West Lane Road. Item L is Resolution 8R15, a resolution authorizing issuance of a Class B liquor license to Meyer Stores gas station located at 1774 West Lane Road. Item M is Resolution 14R15, a resolution to vacate drain adjustment across Lot 41 on Queen Oaks Drive. Item N is Resolution 16R15, a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into service agreements for phone service with IP communications and an high-fiber internet service contract with Winnebago County. Item O is Resolution 22R15, a resolution authorizing contract award to N Trac Group as lowest bidder at $117,386 for construction of the Leland Water Main Adjustments. And finally, item P is Resolution 23R15, a resolution authorizing contract award to Estenstrom Excavating as low bidder in the amount of $398,956 for the stone landing park improvements and boat ramp construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Is there any further discussions? I see none. Will clerk take roll call?
Trustee Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Lori. All items under consent agenda is approved. Next, we have unfinished business, and the first one is line item D under the consent agenda. Ordinance 19-15, authorized promissory note for JCPenney property. Second reading. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff conducted a survey of area banks to obtain the most favorable rate for this loan. The amount of the loan is $900,000. The winning bank was Illinois Bank, which came in at a rate of 2.2%. And the maturity is a 10-year maturity note. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Tim. Is there any questions? I see none. Will clerk take roll call?
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
Ordinance 19-15 has been approved. We're stuck at reading. Next, we have Ordinance 05-15, amend Chapter 9, Article 9.114, remove reference to Sunday hours. Second reading. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. This ordinance would remove reference to Sunday hours from our Alcohol and Beverages chapter of the village code, so Sunday hours would become the same as the other days of the week, which is from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Currently, establishments with a liquor license should not be operating until 9:00 a.m. on Sundays, but some of these businesses do serve breakfast and they open earlier than that. The intent is not for these places to be in violation of their liquor license, and this is why staff has proposed this text amendment. The Liquor Commission did vote to recommend approval of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there any trustee discussions? I see none. Will clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays.
Ordinance 05-15, amend Chapter 9, Article 9.114, remove reference to Sunday hours. The second reading has been approved. Next, we have new business. Resolution 17-R15, urge Governor and General Assembly to protect full funding of the LGDF fund revenue. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So made.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you. As you all will recall, Mayor Boland reported at his last board meeting that in addition to a letter that was drafted and sent to the governor, a resolution would be brought forward appealing to the governor to reconsider his proposal to reduce the local share of income tax by 50%. The resolution states, and I paraphrase, "Whereas municipalities are frontline providers of government services, and whereas the state of Illinois has a longstanding tradition of collecting tax revenues on behalf of municipal governments, and whereas municipalities have fewer options to raise revenue and rely on the full amount of revenue that the state collects on their behalf, and whereas the loss of the state shared income tax would result in elimination of countless jobs, local tax increases, program and service cuts, and could increase debt burdens that would be felt by all citizens. And whereas, under this proposal, the village of Machesney Park would lose approximately $1.15 million annually, which represents 18% of our projected FY 2016 operating expenditures, and therefore be resolved by the President and Board of Trustees of the village of Machesney Park that the village of Machesney Park urges Governor Browner and the General Assembly to protect full funding of the local government distributive fund and other revenue sources that allow local governments to provide for the health, safety, and general welfare of their residents."
Thank you, Tim. Is there any trustee discussions? Trustee Kit.
Because we don't know what Governor Browner will decide to do with the letter, I think it's... We should be mindful about how we're spending our money. JCPenney's, we don't know if we're going to receive the money for the home buyout program along the river. So, I think we should be mindful about how we spend it in the future, and we should not go with more debt than what we can handle. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kit. Is there any more discussion? I see none. Will clerk take roll call?
Trustee Beck.
Aye. Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Kit.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Resolution 17-R15 has been adopted. Next, we have public comment. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a public comment? I see none. Next, we have closed session, 5 ILCS 1202C1, evaluation of personnel, and 2C5 real property